Call to order, the June 22 meeting of the Cary Town Council. If you look at the dice today, you'll notice we're missing one council member. Councilmember Laurie Bush, who is actually out of the country but is attending via the phone. Councilmember Bush, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us. I know it's very late where you are. So what a committed council member you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to now recognize Councilmember Smith for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This past month, Cary lost a neighborhood hero, Jim Smith, who passed away after battling pancreatic cancer for the past seven months. And like many of us, he came from somewhere else, moved to Cary, and fell in love with his new home. He loved cars, and he was a fixture at Hendrick Cary, where he held many positions over his 25-year career. But his most important one was playing Santa Claus at their annual Christmas party for the last 20 years. He was a dedicated member and past president of the Cary McGregor Rotary Club, and he loved selling them ham biscuits at the Rotary booth at the state fair. And he was a member of the Cary First United Methodist Church here in downtown and enjoyed volunteering for their pancake breakfasts. And he was always making the best bacon and sausage of anybody there. So, you know, volunteering for all of this is kind of the Cary way. And, oh yeah, he was a good golfer and a fixture at fundraising tournaments. Jim typified the very spirit of Cary. He was a wonderful, caring, and compassionate person who always stepped up to help. He had that special knack that inspired all of us to want to do better. He has left us, but left his mark on so many. And he will be deeply missed but never forgotten. And please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. That would be deeply appreciated. Now join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and with his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We now come to the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have some scouts in our audience, Lillian and Kate, who are working from trupe night 219, 2019, that are working on the Star Rank and their citizenship and community badge. Will you stand up and be recognized? That takes us to Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the online and printed agendas. There were three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, calling in, or attending here in person this evening. If you are here in person and would like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and you may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that's to your advantage because you get more time to speak at a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium. It'll start off with a green light. After two and a half minutes, when there's 30 seconds remaining, it'll turn to a yellow light, and when your time expires, it will turn to a flashing red light. And that's the moment, again, that I will interrupt you, again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out. And first, I will call on the clerk to read any written comments, and then call on any registered speakers.
We had eight written comments. Linda Smith raised concerns about using taxpayer money on the town hall development and asked questions about how the development will be paid for in the future. Her other questions included information about the loan given to the maintenance inn and what green stormwater infrastructure will be in the downtown park. Richard Carroll suggested he'd like to see an urban forest on the town hall land, following the tradition started 23 years ago by planting the Don Redwoods. He would like to see the campus become the first arboretum on town hall property in the United States. He also recommends council to reread the correspondence from P E J and leave the forest on Maynard as a contribution to our urban forest and green infrastructure. Suzanne Davis expressed her disappointment with the images that have surfaced on the downtown Cary Office Vision Project. She suggested the town consider downtown traffic and commercial market, recommended taking a pause and seeing downtown complete before the next office development. Amanda Benson requested to talk with a staff member who could answer the questions she has laid out in her written comments. Her questions were around 921 southeast Maynard Road. These questions covered a range of topics, including Greenway's permissions granted for adjacent sites, notification to surrounding small businesses, and how the construction at the site impact homeowners who are in the direct path of the latest plan. Anne Horner submitted an attachment containing residents' concerns and suggestions from the Wood Hall community regarding the Canoli development. This attachment is in your packet. Heather Wilson, resident of Old Thomason Creek and has the property that borders the Canoli development, she shared her concern about the current proposal not being consistent with the low-density development lot size, nor is it congruent with the lots within her neighborhood. She urged council to deny the request. She also described the large neighborhood meeting and listed the unaddressed concerns in her comments. Samantha Metro raised multiple concerns, which are detailed in her full remarks. Two main concerns were affordable housing and environmental actions. She suggested that Cary's affordable housing be accommodating to all income levels and not destroy part of the Walnut Creek watershed. Her concerns about the environmental action included suggesting council read about the environmental racism and encourage Cary to protect mature trees, forest areas, and creeks over profits. John Bowe submitted written comments and also signed up to speak on these comments.
Thank you. And now you're calling on registered speakers.
Yes, our first registered speaker would be John Bowe.
My name is John Boyle, and I live in the Wood Hall subdivision. My concern here regards the rezoning, annexation of the Canoy property. And I just wanted to say, I'm not going to discuss technical issues, but I was reading about Jordan Lake, and I think it was kind of created in 1945, Army Corps engineer owns it. I think they stopped two rivers and dam. Whatever it is, I think, at this point, I think Jordan Lake is like a gift to all of us to preserve. People boat there, they fish there, there's bald eagles that people go to look at at the dam. It really is, you know, a wonderful thing that's not only enjoyed by the locals and Cary, but all over. And I'm a little worried, like, you know, we live about three miles from Jordan Lake, and this proposal to rezone is proposed for houses much more dense than what we have right now. And I've read a little bit about the joint land use agreement that was done, I'm not sure, 10, 20 years ago. And I understand the economics of business. I have advanced degrees in economics and business, and I understand the right for people to make profit and growth as the way our system works. But when they did this joint land use agreement, I have to believe that they were thinking that economics purely wasn't going to rule, that we had to keep some of this, the rural nature of Chatham County, and the protection of this gift, Jordan Lake. And it seems like that you would think that the lot sizes would be greater as you go towards Jordan Lake. This property that we're talking about is probably going to be about two and a half miles as the crow flies to Jordan Lake, but instead, it's denser. I wonder what was the purpose of the joint land use agreement if it was to make it more dense as you went towards the property there? And I think if you go with the proposal by the buyer, the owner of the property, it's going to set a precedent. It's going to set a precedent of who then does the next neighborhood. They're going, well, look at them. They did that. So it's kind of wonder, when does the joint land use agreement kick in and take place? I think it's really now in this vote. That's about all I have here. I just want to, my deceased father had, his word on his voicemail was, please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Patrick Frost. Sorry.
I'm joined here by my wife Christine, my mother-in-law, some other like-minded friends are joining as well here as well as online. My wife and I have lived in this beautiful town for the past 30 years, and we're seeing Cary go in the wrong direction. The Apostle Paul writes in Romans 13 that there is no authority except what God has established. Therefore, you are all ministers of God, and you are charged with promoting good and punishing evil. Instead, you have been promoting evil and punishing good. The town has proclaimed June to be Pride Month and is celebrating the sinful homosexual and transgender ideology. It is a destructive worldview that undermines God's design for the family, and millions of children are suffering abuse and being robbed of their innocence as a result. How dare you try to indoctrinate our town into joining this wicked sex cult? It is appalling that anyone would celebrate sin like this. Would you celebrate lying? Sadly, we know that you would, because two members of this council have lied to us. Two years ago, we warned this council that a nondiscrimination ordinance, sexual orientation and gender identity would be weaponized against Christians. And two council members assured us that these laws are made at the state and federal level, and the town has no authority to pass laws like that. And yet, last year, the town voted to adopt Wake County's NDO. Perhaps it's fitting that the council has chosen to celebrate pride, because it takes extreme pride to defy God and make up your own moral standards. Maybe you think that we're being hypocritical for condemning sin. Maybe you think that our message is all about hatred and bigotry, but nothing could be further from the truth. We came here today to celebrate one of the fruits of the Spirit, which is love. And no, I don't mean the world's definition of love, where you affirm sin so you don't hurt people's feelings or so you can fit in with the cool crowd. Real love reflects God's character, because God is love. The Apostle Paul writes in 1 Corinthians 13 that love does not boast, it is not proud, and it does not delight in evil, but it rejoices in truth. Jesus said that he rebukes those whom he loves, so we're here speaking the truth to you in love. There is no neutrality when it comes to Jesus. You're either for him or you're against him, and you must choose this day whom you will serve. So we are praying for you to repent and turn from the LGBT idol. We also pray for those that you are leading astray with your demonic proclamation. We pray that those who have been seduced by the LGBT propaganda would turn to Christ and receive true love and forgiveness. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Jakin.
I'm also here to voice my concerns over the proposed plans for the Canoy property development and to urge you council members to carefully consider if the proposal actually meets the intentions of the Cary-Chatham County Joint Land Use Agreement. The stated intentions include, quote, "to preserve the rural character and to create a sense of place that is distinct, attractive, and of high quality," and importantly, "while still allowing for balanced growth and development." Planning boards are given the right to, quote, "exercise discretion and judgment in determining whether they believe that an application is sufficient and appropriate," and I am urging each of you to do just that. A major concern about this proposal is that buffer and transition zones are inadequate. Although the zoning board voted approval, some members may have been under an impression that the transition zones are larger than actually proposed, based on a confusing town of Cary presentation, in which the total buffer zone was considered as the sum of actual buffer zone plus perimeter lot areas. This is an unusual calculation and is not a criterion for zoning decisions, and it may have created an expanded view of what otherwise would be considered inadequate buffer zone areas. Town council members should also be aware that development in this impermeable Jordan Lake watershed area has already caused significant downstream damage despite compliance with Cary building regulations. A major contributing factor is that regulations, building regulations, do not apply to stream that erosion. For example, the rapid release of stormwater from Destin is causing significant erosion of Lick Creek and accumulation of silt in Wooded Lake in the Wendy Hill development. Similarly, the development upstream of Thompson Creek increased water flow, which resulted in road and driveway washouts. Clearcutting the Canoy property is also likely to have more of these unforeseen consequences. The Canoy property is the first development with small lot sizes in this area. Therefore, it is extremely important to view the Canoy decision in terms of the precedent that will be set and its impact on future zoning decisions. This important point should be factored into an overall vision for development of this unique area of Cary-Chatham County. It's a vision that should be aligned with the intent of the joint use plan. I urge council members to carefully consider the impact of their vote and to exercise their right to ask for revisions that align with the intentions of the joint use agreement. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Dan Pike.
It's an honor to be here in front of you again. I'm here tonight representing the Board of the Cary Downtown Farmers Market, in which we have some folks here, along with our market manager who's here, and our vendors and the hundreds of patrons that visit us each week at the market. In front of you, that we provided earlier, is our 2022 Year in Review for the Cary Downtown Farmers Market. From that, I'm going to highlight that we welcomed approximately 25,000 patrons in 2022. And that doesn't include the 10,000-plus people we had at our Farmer's Fall Festival last September. Vendors in 2022 earned sales in excess of $430,000. That occurred for four hours on Saturdays for about 48 Saturday market season. We allow no resale at the market, with the exception of fish, and all of our vendors must be within 100-mile radius, so the money that the vendors made stays here and makes a difference. We proudly have three programs that greatly benefit our community. The first program is Eat a Rainbow. This program is designed for children to learn that eating all colors of the rainbow are good for them. We provide our young patrons with a passport and a $5 coupon to spend every Saturday at the market, so they can buy fruits and vegetables of all different colors. When they're done shopping, they come back to the information tent and get the colors checked off on their passport, and when it's full, they get a prize, a grand prize. The second program is our nutrition assistance program. We accept SNAP. And the beautiful thing about our program is that we will double the person's dollars up until $30. So if they come to the market and get $30 off of their SNAP card, we provide them with $60 worth of tokens to spend at the market. In seven months in 2022, we gave out over $5,000 in benefits for this program. Unfortunately, in 2023, the government has cut back on SNAP benefits, so we've lost some of our regular patrons. However, we are working with Dorcas, churches, and other outlets to make sure people, that people know that we're here to help with their food and securities. We've also partnered with Wake County in a program called Produce to Pantry, where we purchase fresh fruit, vegetables, and meat and fish from our vendors prior to the end of the market each week, and then deliver that to the Dorcas Food Pantry. Since the first weekend in April of this year, the Cary Downtown Farmers Market has donated over 530 pounds of food to Dorcas. I know my time is almost up, so I'm going to close with this. The Cary Downtown Farmers Market is a community of vendors and patrons who are authentic, welcoming, and inclusive. We even encourage people in political offices to attend, as Laurie Bush attends almost every Saturday whenever she's in town. So I invite all of you to drop by and give us a try and see firsthand what kind of positive impact we're making in the community we serve. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Thomas Pira.
Kind of interesting that there's a recurring theme of density and transition and preservation out there, and it's kind of an eye-opening moment here. My name is Thomas Pira. I'm at 243 Maryland Circle in the Triangle Forest. My purpose here is to update you regarding the open question of rezoning case 21 REZ16, the Old Apex Road, from the perspective of the surrounding community members. The public hearing on this matter was brought before you on July 28 of last year, and during that meeting, your unanimous feedback was that the project as proposed then, the 255 units, was too great of massing and density for the area as proposed during that public meeting. You encouraged the applicant to work with the surrounding neighbors to pare back the proposed project. On November 28, the town board-appointed Citizen Planning and Zoning Board also heard the case, which was presented with the original proposed 255 units, with a concession of an additional 100-foot setback along the western property line. It was during that meeting, the board voted 8 to 0 to deny the rezoning request, which you now have in your files, assuming that that's what, you know, that committee would do. I just have to believe that it would. Since November of 2022, since the November 2022 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the applicant has not contacted anyone from the Triangle Forest neighborhood or any other surrounding neighborhoods to discuss working out a fair and equitable plan to scale back the size, massing, and density of the project. So I think it's important for all of you to understand that we're making all effort to work this out. This week, we were informed via email by Katie Dry of the Planning and Zoning Department that the applicant has indicated reducing the size of the development to 216 units with a 150-foot buffer along the western property line. Within this buffer, it is presumed that a Greenway link would be incorporated, which would effectively provide a 100-foot setback or less. No one is seeing any working plans up to this point. The properties involved in this project are comprised of several parcels that equal 21 acres. Even if the applicant, in fact, scales back the project to 216 units over a raw area of 21 acres, the net density of this project will be 10 units per acre.
Mr. Pira, I'm sorry I have to interrupt you. Your time has expired.
Oh, my, sorry.
If you have additional comments, I appreciate you passing these out.
Okay.
If you have additional comments, if you leave them with the clerks, you make sure we get a copy.
All right. And we'll all be in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Stevens.
I'm James Stevens. I'd like to extend on some previous comments that were made regarding the Canoy property approval, which is before you today, and to be specific about the recent Planning Board vote. The Canoy property is in a two-homes-per-acre or low-density area under the Joint Use Plan. Although the Canoy property meets the basic minimum requirement of two homes per acre based on gross acreage, the lot sizes are very small in the developable area. The development is also in a transition zone between the low-density and very-low-density zone developments. An important aspect to the annexation and rezoning addressed by the Joint Use Plan, quoting from Section 3.6, is, quote, "rezoning and development requests should conform to this plan's recommendation, and that appropriate transitions should be provided between developments. Planning boards may exercise discretion and judgment in determining whether they believe that the transition proposed is sufficient and appropriate." This provision of the Joint Use Plan and the flexibility outlined under the plan was not presented to the Planning Board by the Town of Cary Planning Department. The only reference to the Joint Use Plan presented by the Town of Cary Planning Department was that it had been considered as part of the overall Imagine Cary Framework review and met the minimum requirements. We believe this was an error, and the board should have been informed more clearly regarding both its responsibilities and the discretion allowed under the Joint Use Plan. This is particularly clear when in the 4-2 vote, members voted yes but expressed concern regarding the impact on surrounding residents of the high-density lot sizes that will be fit into the developable area, but voted yes anyway, apparently because they believed the plan had met minimum requirements, and that was all that was necessary. Had they been informed that the Joint Use Plan allows and even encourages discretion in zoning decisions in transition areas, and had the case been better presented to the board, the outcome may have been entirely different. Indeed, we believe for this and future decisions, the Joint Use Plan should be the most important factor in decisions, not just an add-on to the Imagine Cary framework. Thus, we believe the decision by the Planning Board was wrongly decided, because they did not act with full understanding of the discretion allowed under the Joint Plan. Had this been presented, we believe the reticence in voting yes expressed by at least one member of the Planning Board would have led to a no vote. Residents had no chance to present support while developers spoke extensively. We ask that you not approve the zoning application. It's been extremely frustrating to try to get support from either Chatham County or Town of Cary regarding application of the Joint Use Plan for residents. You can start making a difference now and set an important and much-needed precedent for future developments, which are in the approval process, and make the Joint Use Plan the centerpiece of future approval decisions. We strongly encourage you to vote no for this approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Mark Swallow.
My name is Mark Swallow. I reside at 604 Chertan Place in the Cormington Development off of Arthur Pierce Road. I'm here to challenge the council to think holistically in detail about how the town addresses climate change. Let me explain what I mean. My wife and I had our new home built last year. I knew that I was going to have solar panels installed and ensured that they would be permitted by the HOA. As the town was being built, I requested the builder incorporate two metal flexible conduits, one from each roof area, to funnel the wiring from the panels down to the solar control panel in the garage. This took months to gain agreement. The simple request that literally was less than a hundred dollars of material took months of discussion with the builder. I can't be the only Cary citizen that is building or will be building in a town that could make use of this. Just before we closed, a Cary Town Inspector came out and required the builder to plant an elm tree and oak tree in the backyard. Sounds great, right? Except in ten or fifteen years, they're going to be blocking out my solar panels. Now, look, I understand the value of trees. I like trees. I'm not opposed to trees. But couldn't there be some other type of tree that could be planted back there that would not tower over my home? Something like a redbud tree, a dogwood tree, something else? I've had my solar panels since November. I've saved five megawatts of electricity by powering my home and electric car with my panels. I fed back to the grid 1.9 megawatts of electricity to offset others' use of electricity. These savings from just my home have done more to offset carbon use than those two trees. What finally brought me here tonight is that last week, the builder planted more trees in the berm between the lot, our lot and our neighbor behind us. When I asked about these, the builder explained that the town of Cary was requiring this. When I spoke with the inspector, she said that the berm requirement is for evergreen shrubs and trees with a minimum of ten-foot canopies. These additional plantings will further impact my solar production. Please note that I am not against the berm, but can we explore other plantings that can achieve the same thing? So I'm here to request that you relook at what the town is doing, i.e. tree requirements, and not doing metal conduits and new construction that would augment the use of solar power generation, self-power generation, more of a holistic approach. Now, I know this is getting into the devil into the details. That's kind of where we need to be. We are at the point, council, that we must do more to reduce our common footprints, or our children and their children will have a truly catastrophic environment in which to live. I look forward to hearing more about the next steps on this. Thank you for your time, for your service to our community, and for listening to me. Good night.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Glenda Topp.
Mayor and members of council, the inter-local agreement regarding the Joint Land Use Plan was adopted July 1st, 2012. As stated in the agreement, for as long as the agreement is in effect, the town and county will participate in an assessment every five years to determine if a joint update is needed. At the last assessment, it was determined that no update was needed. The property remains in the low-density classification. The density is a maximum of two units per acre with no minimum lot size. Also, with the Canoye rezoning, Chatham County wrote to the town that the proposed rezoning complies with the joint plan. We've made numerous changes since it was originally submitted and since the public hearing, which I'd like to go over very briefly. We've added a four-foot berm where there's no vegetation adjacent to Luda Shop and Thompson Road. We've reduced the density to 1.4 units per acre, ten-foot minimum side setback. We've increased the community gathering space from 10,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet. Lots west of Thompson Road shall be 13,000 square feet. We've agreed to no individual driveway cuts on Thompson Road. And fourteen lots west of Thompson Road and sixty lots east of Thompson Road must abut common open space. It's important to note that the Town of Cary has the most stringent stormwater requirements of any municipality in Wake County. Cary requires that development attain the 100-year storm to meet pre-versus-post requirements. This requirement further ensures the protection of Jordan Lake. The proposed rezoning is outside the rural buffer boundary, thus allowing for the extension of public water and sewer. The applicant has worked diligently with the adjacent property owners through neighborhood meetings and other conversations with the Town of Cary staff and council members in developing zoning conditions that meet the spirit and intent of the joint plan to balance the desires of the neighbors and the developer. In summary, the rezoning proposes a zoning classification that is consistent with the joint plan and complies with numerous chapters of the Cary Community Plan. Based on the proposed zoning conditions being offered, the proposed rezoning is consistent, again, with both the Cary Community Plan and the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan, and we ask for the council's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Topp.
No additional registered speakers.
If you haven't registered and you are here this evening and would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would invite you forward at this time.
I have three, actually four.
Could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Mary Collins.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd just like to say that I really support the downtown Cary Farmers Market. Been going for 25 years. I asked at the last council meeting about the 20-year HUD 1.4 million dollar loan that was to jumpstart the Maiton Inn, and I've since received a follow-up by Councilman Eats, which I appreciate. It's my understanding that that wasn't unsecured loan, and since the bankruptcy and sale of the Maiton Inn, that $105,000 a year principal and interest for 20 years, or the 1.4 million, is actually becoming the responsibility of the town and our citizens to pay back. So I just want to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding that and that I'm clear on that point. Second point tonight is that we I received a glossy flyer from the town about District B, and it was my understanding from our town manager at the last board, last council meeting, that this was to be informational for voters in terms of redistricting. It did not include any information about where to register to vote, how to contact to make sure you were properly registered, et cetera. It just really just seemed to be a promotional flyer for District B and the people currently in office. My next point is about the request for qualifications for development of town-owned land in downtown Cary. I know that this has been a controversial subject, and at least three council members and the mayor have talked about it. It is unfortunate that it seems to have been poorly handled, that the renderings were not what was intended, but the bottom line is, from what I hear from other citizens, we just want to put a hold on that. It's based on past experience. We see things happening very quickly, even if it's years in the making. When it finally happens, it's really drastic. So just so you understand, the feedback that I think you're getting is, don't go there. Finally, on the topic of flooding and stormwater management, with all the rains that we've been having, it's obvious that we need forested areas, we need to protect our watersheds, and we need to protect the Walnut Creek watershed. So as has happened before, we're calling for the seven-acre forest that is at 923 1 Southeast Maynard to not be developed, but to be created into a educational forest and a STEM resource and recreational resource for the town, which would impact three schools that are very close to it, as well as Fenton and the former Cary Town Center when developed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Patrick O'Neill. I live at Windy Hill subdivision, right off Luda Shop Road. We've addressed, my neighbors have and friends already, concerns about the high density that's entering into that rural area off Luda Shop Road, not just with proposed Canoye property, but other projects that are also being discussed and planned with planning, looking towards rezoning. In particular, let me address, because I already agree with what's been said on the other speakers pertaining to that, but I know the concerns that have been expressed over the years about light pollution, and I want to challenge you to drive out now Luda Shop Road and see the requirements that have been placed for lighting. We're starting to look like one of the runways at Raleigh Durham Airport, but well-lit runway. It's the light pollution is getting extreme. That rural country atmosphere that's been there is gone. The night sky is disappearing, and we know that's not the intent of the Joint Use Plan, but that is what's happening. And part of that is, we speak with the developers there, and I have a background as a developer myself, as they have been informed that that is the lighting that must be installed on not on the not only Luda Shop, but along Barbie Road, and there's another property there of 83 acres that you'll probably be hearing about, and it's just that entire area. The light pollution is just extreme. And it's coming from that overdevelopment, high density, and we ask you to take seriously that consideration. I've already been addressed about those other concerns of the joint use and the intent. We've had discussions with all. We ask that you seriously consider the future of what that area will look like, at the pace it's growing, developments being allowed, the lighting situation, the watershed area. After today's rain, which we all probably experienced, was not a joy if you were out in it. I can speak from experience in that. But right now, if you were to go and look at the streams that are just flowing into the lake at Windy Hill and the extreme amount of washout that's taking place, and it's because of the density that's being allowed, you can do lots of planting, lots of retention ponds, but when we have these kind of storms and rains that come through, we're not doing enough to really prevent the erosion that's taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Could you move to your left? Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Cary Strickland Ward. I live in Old Thompson Creek subdivision, and I guess I'll close this out tonight. So the Canoye 22REZ-13 is coming up for your vote tonight. It is a special and unique property, and when you watch the zoning board information, it said 23 acres will be left unbuilt. It's because 23 acres are not buildable. It's a unique property, is a watershed, the Jordan Lake, is a very important watershed. It is about three miles, if you look at it, not on roads, but just from the topography to the lake, it's about three miles. So whatever watershed is coming off, runoff from people's yards, not having enough impermeable areas, is going to impact the lake, which will impact Jordan Lake water quality, which has already been a problem for the town of Cary. Development is a good thing. Development should occur, but this isn't the right proposal for this particular property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Boyle, have you already spoken? We're only allowing one time. Sorry. If you have additional comments, we'd be glad to get them through to the town clerk.
John forgot his card. I was just passing.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
My name's Ed Burnett, and I'm here to speak on the Canoye property.
I should know you. You worked at SAS, right?
I did.
I apologize twice.
I was there 37 years.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So I've been I've been in Cary for about 40 years now. It was a lot different back then. Harrison was two lanes. Maynard, I think, was a dirt road up in that area. A lot has changed. You've heard a lot about the Joint Use Plan, and I just want to reiterate that. I have a couple of handouts here. Page one shows the lot sizes that we're talking about. You have the wood-haul lots, which are 20, 21,000 square foot on that side, and then the proposal is to go down to one row of 15,000, and you can see in that box how big that is, and then immediately go down to 10,000, which is pretty small. To the southwest, it'll be 13, and to the north northwest is Destin, which will be which is about 22,000. By the way, that big box around it, that's the size of the Old Thompson Creek neighborhood lot, about four acres. They range from four to from three to eight. The second page is just my drawing of what the property might look like with 140 approximately houses on it. I've gotten to know the builder, Mr. Farrell, and his partner, Mr. Smith. You're here tonight, and also Glenda. They're good people. I just think we have a disagreement in this case. Has anybody ever come before you to ask for more density? Have they said, you know, I like this proposal, but I'd kind of like to see smaller lots? Nobody does that. Why is that? Because it's your job, your hard job, to balance the needs of the developer and the community. And in this case, I think you have to decide that the community needs to preserve that rural nature that the Joint Land Use Plan provides for. There's not a lick of rural nature in that second page. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Alan House. I appreciate you all being here. So I just wanted to say, in the in the past few months driving around Cary, I'm just noticing more people running red lights, and it's starting to get a concern for me. And I don't know if that falls under. I think a lot of lights have cameras. I myself, in the past, have gotten a fine from a camera, but I just don't know how many. I'm probably courting another fine by saying this here in front of all of you, but I'm willing to do that because I'm just concerned seeing more and more people running red lights. So whatever can be done to try increasing enforcement of that, more cameras or more funding for turning more cameras on, I don't know. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. House, if you leave your contact information, the chief is sitting right there.
Oh.
He can have somebody work with you, and we don't have red light cameras.
Oh, you don't?
So it's safe.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
So make sure you leave your contact information, and somebody will be in touch.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one will close, Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the fourth item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. For the people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review the Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the Consent Agenda, we have Proposed Amendments to Town Code of Ordinances, Resolution for Tax Collection for the 2024 Fiscal Year, Act 29, Ordinance Amendments Technical and Minor, Calling for a Public Hearing on 23 AO6, Merit Properties Annexation, Calling for a Public Hearing on 23 AO2, 11550 Green Level Church Road, AT&amp;T South LLC License Agreement, 21 REZ-17, Destin Phase III, and Statement of Consistency, 21 A18, Goodwin and Destin LLC Annexation, and 23 REZO2, Wicklow Drive Zoning Map Correction. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll move to approve the Consent Agenda.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and that takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out, with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is on the consideration of an ordinance designating the Nancy Jones House located at 9321 Chapelville Road as an historic landmark. Historic... Historic Preservation Program Manager Jillian White will present this item, and then council may take action. Ms. White, is this your, this is your first time, right?
Yes, it is.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, for your consideration, is an ordinance designating the Nancy Jones House as a Cary historic landmark. The house is owned by Cary and is located at 9321 Chapel Hill Road. Following this presentation, there will be a public hearing, after which you may take action on the proposed landmark ordinance. The property we are discussing for landmarking tonight is the circa 1803 Nancy Jones House. The house was originally situated on 2,000 acre estate owned by Henry Jones and Nancy Ann Jones, where they operated a stagecoach stop and tavern out of the house. When Henry died in 1841, Nancy continued to live in the house and operate the tavern for another 30-plus years. As it was the only large white house in the area, it was a landmark in its own right and received many important visitors, including numerous North Carolina governors. The house is a two-story timber-framed dwelling built in the vernacular federal-style architecture. The house has original materials, features, and finishes, making it a good candidate for landmarking. Becoming a landmark is a very special honor. A local historic landmark is a property that is historically significant and important to Cary and its community. Designated by council, a landmark property holds architectural, historical, or cultural significance and has a high degree of historic integrity. Once a property is designated as a landmark, owners must apply for and receive a special permit called a certificate of appropriateness before making a repair or replacement when there is a change in the design, materials, or general appearance to the exterior of the building or site. Minor changes may be reviewed by staff, however, the application must hold a quasi-judicial hearing, public hearing, on applications for major changes. In 2019, the Nancy Jones House was located at 9391 Chapel Hill Road on property owned by the S V Temple of North Carolina. After various stakeholder meetings and collaboration with the temple, the community, the State Historic Preservation Office, and staff, Cary took ownership of the Nancy Jones House with the intention to relocate it and retain its listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Thanks to the initiative of council many years ago, in March of 2021, Cary relocated the house to town-owned property approximately 500 feet down the road to 9321 Chapel Hill As the project manager for this relocation, I can tell you it was no small feat, but thanks to our amazing staff here at Cary and our wonderful community stakeholders, we were able to relocate the house successfully, and we even fixed the chimneys in the process. Not to mention, we salvaged the original historic brick foundation and reused it at the new site. Because of this thoughtful and diligent work, in May of 2022, it was confirmed that the Nancy Jones House would remain listed in the National Register of Historic Places. Following the relocation, staff contracted with MDM Historical Consultants to complete a landmark nomination report. The report was received in August of 2022 and subsequently submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office for its review and comment. The Nancy Jones House is historically significant because it embodies the distinctive characteristics of federal-style architecture built in the early 19th century Wake County. The house has retained a high level of integrity in the areas of workmanship, materials, and As required, the Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing on November 9, 2022, and have provided the following statement for me to share with you. At the November 9 meeting, the HPC considered the merits of historic landmark designation for the Nancy Jones House. Town staff presented a thorough report, and the commission reviewed the landmark nomination and the comments provided by the State Historic Preservation Office. The commission held a public hearing at which there was one speaker. Following the public hearing, the commission voted unanimously to recommend a council that they consider designating the Nancy Jones House a Cary historic landmark. The HPC is supportive of this landmarking and excited to see Cary continuing the trend of landmarking town-owned historic properties to better preserve and celebrate Cary's history. The proposed landmark ordinance includes all exterior design elements, including form, features, and materials of the building, as well as the select interior elements from the original part of the house. Any minor or major changes to the interior elements will be reviewed by staff, following the same process as a minor certificate of appropriateness. As we move into the rehabilitation phase later this year, each of the ordinance elements will be considered, and we will, and work will be completed using the Secretary of the Interior's standards. Based on the findings of the landmark report, staff recommends that council conducts a public hearing and considers adoption on the proposed landmark ordinance. Notice of the public hearing tonight was mailed to property owners within 800 feet of the proposed landmark property. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. White. So now's the time for the public hearing for the Nancy Jones House historic landmark designation, and I'm going to call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on registered speakers.
Uh, we have no written comments. We did have one registered speaker, Brent Miller.
My name is Brent Miller. I'm a past president and current board member of the Friends of the Page Walker, which, as you know, is a nonprofit volunteer organization with a mission to promote historic preservation, history education, and cultural arts here in Cary. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends to share a message from our board. The Board of Directors of the Friends of the Page Walker Hotel enthusiastically supports the efforts to designate the Nancy Jones House a Cary historic landmark. Built around 1803, the Nancy Jones House was built in the federal style and is the oldest house in the Cary area. History was made in the Nancy Jones House. The stagecoach stop and tavern were visited by a number of political dignitaries, including President James K. Polk, the 11th President of the U.S., as well as former North Carolina Governors John Branch, John Motley Morehead, and William Alexander Graham. A previous National Register nomination states, "It seems likely that, on one occasion or another, practically all of the state's governors in the mid-19th century stopped at the Jones House." Granting the Nancy Jones House status as a Cary historic landmark would give permanent community recognition to the unique historic and architectural character of the house. Equally significant, the preservation of the Nancy Jones House would demonstrate Cary's values and contribute to the overall quality of life in Cary. Preserving this unique historic home gives citizens a tangible link to Cary's history as the town grows into a positive future. The Historic Preservation Commission has done important work to understand both the actual and symbolic value to residents of this historic home. And so, being composed of citizen volunteers and working to represent Cary citizens, the Friends Board of Directors thanks the Historic Preservation Commission for their work to date and supports a recommendation to grant the Nancy Jones House Cary historic landmark status. Original signed by Cary Mead, President of the Friends of the Page Walker. And that concludes the message from the Friends, but I see I have a little bit of time left, and I've got over my shyness, so I'd like to add a personal note. I spent six years on Cary's Historic Preservation Commission, five as chair several years ago, and our town manager, Sean Stiegel, paid a visit to the Historic Preservation Commission, and he said something that stuck with me all these years. And I'm paraphrasing, and hopefully Mr. Stiegel will correct me if I get this wrong, but, um, he said that any town that cares about its history always, always preserves the oldest house in town and all of its important historic resources. Now, the Nancy Jones House is the oldest remaining house in Cary, and I think it's undoubtedly the most important historic resource that is not currently have landmark protection. And landmark designation is the most significant step that you can take to ensuring its preservation, so I urge you to do just that, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other registered speakers?
No, I'm there.
If you're here in the audience this evening and would like to speak at the public hearing on designating the Nancy Jones House as an historic landmark, now's the time, come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Marla Durrell. I've lived in Cary for 34 years, which is a long time, but not historic. I want to be sure to let you know that I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen and not as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. First of all, I want to thank you for saving this important property. It means a lot to Cary. It means a lot to me, and there's a wonderful story that someday after this is our landmark, I'd share with you, maybe over a peach brandy, and there's a story behind that. I'd also like to thank you for designating funds for the rehabilitation of this property. It's not inexpensive, but it's valuable, and your action to do that and to continue to support it is important to Cary and important to me. I'm set exactly where you are. I can tell you that when I would look at the agenda, I'd go down the list and I'd say, "Easy decision." "Hard decision." "Mm, this one's a lose-lose," and you've had those too. So I hope you'll agree with me that tonight, this item is a no-brainer, and that you will support the town of Cary and the Nancy Jones House with your vote to make it our most recent and newest Cary historic landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durrell. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments before I call on Councilmember Bush. Any questions or comments?
First, Jillian, I want to thank you and your staff, Chris Corner Michael, Friends of the Page Walker, our Historic Preservation Commission, and everybody who's been a, been a part of this. Uh, it's, seems like it's taken a long time, not only to get to the designation point, but also the move, and later on this evening, we're going to be approving a budget that, um, designates funds to not only to preserve, but restore. And, you know, I made clear to ask at our work session, you know, exactly what that meant, you know? We're not just preserving, we are going to restore this thing to its old glory. Seems like forever ago, when I met with the previous landowner, when we were trying to find a place to put it, um, because of the plans with the temple, and there was this, you know, they were considering developing the land next to it, which they have, or are, are, and I just remember talking to them, you know, "Hey, by any chance, do you have a little extra property that, you know, maybe we could work something out?" And because we really need a place to put this magnificent house. And so, again, I just wanted to thank everybody with the town, staff. I know Dana played a part in it, um, the previous landowner, and everyone. It's just, it's a great example to me, when everybody works together, we can do something remarkable. And then also to Mr. Miller's comments, it's not, it's not just a great home, it was a tavern. And I think also, if we're not going to restore and preserve our greatest taverns in history, then we're not much of a town either, so. Um, heck, who knows? Maybe one day they'll talk about some old tavern that somebody here went to visit one time or another 100 years from now. Who knows? So I'm excited about this one. It has been a long time coming, um, and it's just great to see. I just, I think it's awesome.
Anyone else, questions or comments?
Yeah.
Go for it.
I will jump in. Um, I want to first, somewhat unrelated to this, um, kind of wish my wife a happy birthday. Today's her birthday, and an opportunity to join you guys here instead, so. Um, now, back to topic. So I agree with, uh, with everything Don said. Um, I think this is great that, that we are designating this as a historic landmark. Like Mr. Miller said, this is the oldest residential structure in the area. One other thing I do want to echo is that our Historic Preservation Commission, who there are some of those members here in attendance tonight, have done a phenomenal job as well in seeing this through, but also, one of the most important pieces of this is the education and the community involvement. If we don't have a community that's committed to preservation, this is meaningless. And that commission specifically, especially last month during Historic Preservation Commission Month, um, or Historic Preservation Month, that commission was out there and engaging with citizens and explaining the value of preservation. So I just want to commend that commission and the work that they're doing to, to help us see this stuff through, and I really hope to see more of these. You know, this, this was a long time in the making, but I definitely hope that we have more follow-up here soon.
Thank you, and happy birthday to them.
Can I, can I doubly, doubly, double what he said? Um, before Ryan had the pleasure of being the liaison to this, the Historic Preservation Commission, I got the opportunity to do so, and I showed up clueless, to say the very least, but very enthusiastic. I learned so much from this commission, and then I learned from this council and from my colleagues that there are some things that we sort of know, that it's worth saying out loud, even though all of my colleagues know that we have this Historic Preservation Commission, they're full of experts. So I wanted to share that for anybody that might be listening, maybe watching, so that you understand that there is, is staff, like Ms. White, and there's others, that have an exceptional amount of expertise and knowledge in this area, and they've been driving this, and this is why it's also gone so incredibly well. So I just wanted to double down on, on what Ryan and Don were saying, that this group is, they know what they're talking about.
Very good. Anything else before I call on Ms. Bush? Ms. Bush, you still with us? I know it's got to be like 2:30 in the morning here, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm still here, and I don't have anything, um, else to say. I'm very grateful for what Councilmember Yates and, um, Councilmember Johnson said, and their hard work with the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Any one care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that council approve the ordinance designating the Nancy Jones House as a historic landmark.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to discussion items. Our first and second discussion item is 22 REZ 13, Canoy Tract and Associated Annexation, 22A 13 will be presented together. Principal Planner Heather Wheelahan will give the report, and council may take action. Ms. Wheelahan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to annex and apply initial Cary zoning to approximately 101 acres on the south side of Luder Shop Road at its intersection with Thompson Road. Council may take action on both the annexation case, 22A 13, and the rezoning case, 22REZ 13 this evening. Regarding the associated annexation, 22A 13, the site is contiguous to Cary's primary corporate limits, and as noted in the annexation staff report, the site is able to be served by utilities, fire and police, as well as solid waste. The public hearing was held on February 9, and the matter is before you tonight for final action. The assemblage is in Chatham County, approximately a mile from the Wake County line. It's just west of the 144 lot Wood Hall subdivision and south of the Destin subdivision. Destin Phase III, a proposal to develop 40 detached dwellings, was on your consent agenda this evening, bringing the cumulative Destin neighborhood total to 90 dwellings. Development under Chatham County zoning is located to the west and south of the site. The site is currently zoned Chatham County R1, and the applicant proposes initial Cary zoning of R8 CU, Residential Eight Conditional Use. The applicant has offered a number of zoning conditions. Changes made since the public hearing will be reflected in green. The proposal limits uses to detached dwellings and neighborhood recreation. It limits the density to 1.4 dwelling units per acre, which is a decrease from the 151 total potential dwellings to 141. The proposal commits to calculating the lot size exclusive of the stream buffers, providing 60 ampere receptacles in the garage for each unit for future electric vehicle charging, and providing a minimum, minimum of 50,000 square feet of community gathering area, which is increased from the initial proposal of 10,000 square feet. The proposal also commits to all recommended transportation improvements at site access points, as well as an off-site turn lane at Luder Shop Road and 751. In terms of lot size, the proposal commits to a In terms of lot size, the proposal commits to a 15,000-square-foot minimum along the perimeter of the site, a 13,000-square-foot minimum within the interior section west of Thompson Road, and a 10,000-square-foot minimum within the interior section east of Thompson Road. The applicant has also offered conditions prohibiting individual driveway cuts along Thompson Road, providing a four-foot high berm planted to a Type A standard within the Thompson and Luter Shop roads, Luter Shop Road streetscapes, providing a minimum 10-foot side setback for all lots, and committing that 14 lots west of Thompson Road and 60 lots east of Thompson Road be adjacent to open space such as streetscapes, perimeter buffers, stormwater control, or riparian areas. The applicant has also offered a concept plan as an exhibit that helps demonstrate some of these proposed conditions, including the minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet along the perimeter of the site, the 13,000-square-foot within the interior section west of Thompson, and the 10,000-square-foot minimum within the interior section east of Thompson. The 70-foot average streetscape along Luter Shop Road, which may be averaged to no less than 50 feet at any point. This condition includes a four-foot planted berm to a Type A standard within the streetscape, as well as within the 30-foot streetscape along Thompson. The proposal commits to a 50-foot Type A buffer adjacent to the Chatham County lots to the south and the west, and a Type A 20-foot buffer along the Wood Hall property line to the east. The applicant has committed that these buffers will be located in common open space rather than on individual lots. There is a commitment to 50,000 square feet of community gathering area, 10-DO requirement, a commitment to 1.7 acre area of undisturbed open space in the central area of the site, deserve the existing cemetery on site. Planning and zoning board determined the case to be consistent with the Cary community plan by a four to two vote. Board Chairman Stephen Crutchfield shared the board determination, which I will now read into the record. The board voted four to two, finding Canoy consistent with the town community plan. Those who voted in favor of the rezoning had the following comments. Detached homes are required for this tract. Buffers would shield the development. Lots are smaller than existing Wood Hall area. However, with the buffers and open space provided, the size should not really be apparent. Many homeowners are not interested in large lots. 100-year flood guidelines will control drainage. Existing homes may be saved at some, the existing home may be saved at some time in the future. Lot sizes are well within the low-density zoning of one to two homes per acre. Those who voted not consistent with the town community plan had the following comments. Main concern was smaller lot size, not consistent with the lots in Wood Hall, cannot add in the buffers to increase lot size. The average lot may come closer to 10,000 square feet. Transition does not seem adequate due to the smaller lot sizes, and does not seem to fit low density. That completes Chairman Crutchfield's summary. Since the planning and zoning board, the applicant worked with Caryal Capital Area Preservation to evaluate the Canoy House. CAP found the house to have been altered various times over the years, and therefore does not consider it a preservation interest. Staff evaluation of the request against the Cary community plan includes an analysis of the site in the context of the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan. The joint plan area with Chatham County is one of Cary's special planning areas, which includes Cary community plan policies. First, the Chatham-Cary plan. The subject site is within the low-density residential area of the joint land use plan. In this subarea, the plan recommends up to two dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this case is 1.4 dwelling units per acre. In LDR, the plan allows for a range of housing types, including detached dwellings, duplexes, and townhouses. This proposal includes restricting development to detached dwellings. The plan notes that transitions are important and can be made through landscape buffers, lot size, gross density, and including increased amounts of community gathering area as well as open space. The Canoy proposal includes larger streetscapes and buffers, as well as lots along the perimeter to the west. It commits to 50,000 square feet of community gathering area and includes approximately 27 acres of combined regulatory and voluntary open space. The plan encourages capitalizing on utility availability to help guide development. Development of this parcel would directly continue the extension of utilities along Luter Shop Road from the Wood Hall and Destin subdivisions. This map illustrates the gross density analysis and demonstrates how the rezoning would generally continue the established downward transition in density from the Wake County line at the proposed density of 1.4 dwelling units per acre. In regards to lot size transitions, the proposal commits to varying minimums from 15,000 around the perimeter, 13,000, and 10,000 square foot within the interior sections. Additionally, the applicant has proposed a condition committing that a portion of the lots, 14 on the west side of Thompson, and 60 on the east side of Thompson, a but common open space. This condition could serve to further accomplish transitions, as it could couple lot minimums with open space, resulting in the visual impact of the development being less intense. Staff found the request supports live, shape, serve, and move chapter policies of the Cary community plan. We found that the request supports live by providing housing options and adding to the detached dwelling housing supply. Overall, we found that the proposal supports shape by reasonably addressing the plans intent for transitions through enhanced streetscapes and perimeter buffers, downward gross density pattern, a site layout including 10, 13, and 15,000 square foot lots, as well as requiring that these lots be platted exclusive of the riparian buffers, and that a portion of the lots be adjacent to open space. The 10-foot minimum side setback, the large community gathering area, and total amount of open space also support appropriate transitions. The proposals increased commitments to streetscapes, perimeter buffers, the community gathering area, provision of EV charging for each unit, as well as the undisturbed open space central to the site, all further serve policies. As the applicant has committed to all improvements recommended by the traffic study, staff finds the proposal consistent with the move chapter policies. Staff finds the rezoning consistent with the guidance in the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan and the policies of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request with the conditions as proposed by the applicant, and that council adopt the attached rezoning ordinance and the statement of consistency. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as you discuss.
Thank you, Ms. Wheelahan. Questions or comments?
Sure. Let's get us started. So, one of the speakers talked about a concern that the joint Cary land use plan wasn't considered. And I think either Ms. Wheelahan or Ms. Glover could address that, because it was mentioned, but I think it's worth repeating and clarifying, because it is confusing. It is easy to think that it wasn't considered when the board looked at, was this project consistent with the Cary community plan? But it is. It was considered, because it's part of the plan.
Right. So the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan is technically an appendix to the Imagine Cary Community Plan. It's incorporated, and it's part of it. So when the planning and zoning board is reviewing whether things are consistent with the Cary community plan, they're also looking at the Chatham-Cary plan, they're looking at the housing plan, they're looking at the Parks and Rec plan, and all the other plans that support the Imagine Cary Community Plan.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Glover. I think it's really, it's really challenging when you have land that's been either, you know, occupied by one person for a long time, you know, a large tract of land like this go under proposal for development. It's just really hard to fathom the changes that occur there. And so, I think it's normal for people to be looking for reasons why it shouldn't happen, because it doesn't feel good having this developed. And so, what we've been hearing is that we don't have this, the correct transition down, and that we're going to have implications to the quality of life out there, such as light pollution and whatnot, which I don't think we deny. I think, I think we know that development causes light pollution. But it is a reality that, and it's articulated here, that this project does meet the joint Cary-Chatham land use plan. And I think I'm the only person here that actually was on that committee.
I was on, part of it.
Yeah, you were a part of it. Yeah, and you voted for it. So, of course, Jack voted for it.
He wouldn't let me on.
We were concerned what you would do. But, you know, it does, it does comply. I mean, it's, this is 1.4 dwelling units per acre. And one thing that I think is really hard for people to understand is something that Cary wanted to pursue, and we have pursued over the years, and that's cluster zoning in the sense that you don't just develop the entire site, and I'll juxtapose it against my neighborhood that was built in the 90s, where if there is a creek that ran through, that was part of somebody's yard. And so, every lot in my neighborhood is 20,000 square feet, but it has a creek that runs through, and it's completely undeveloped for the back third of the lot or more. And then we have flooding issues, because houses are built too close to the creeks and so forth, and we've gone through a lot of remediation. So what you see here is development that's staying off of the creek. You see buffers that are offered, and those are developed, a lot of these buffer spaces are actually developable. They could be put into the lot. The problem is, is that when you put those lot, that buffer space into the lot, it gets developed, it gets cleared, people put, you know, take out the trees and put a swingset in and whatnot, even if maybe the ideal of the neighborhood is to keep trees as a screener and a buffer, they come down. So by putting this into HOA, it really protects that buffer and does more. So, I think it's pretty exceptional how many acres of land is preserved between the buffers, the dedicated open space of 1.7 acres, the 50,000 square feet, which is 10 times our standard. I wish more developers gave us 10 times the standard. All of this comes together to mean that it really is a very low dense, it's low density. And our low density is one to three. Everybody keeps calling this a high-density neighborhood. You know, we were just talking about some other land, 50 units an acre. That's high density. This is not high density. It falls within that one to three. By technicality, it is a low-density neighborhood. So, you know, I, like everybody else, would rather see land just stay like a field and forest, but people who own land have the right to develop their land, and especially when they comply or exceed with our standards. And I think this project does.
Other comments?
I have some clarifying questions, if I can. Ms. Wheelahan, the buffers that's being proposed, I think it's a 20-foot Type A between this development and Wood Hall. Is that LDO required, or is that enhanced?
So the LDO requirement would be a 20-foot Type B. So they have increased the planting standard offering to a Type A. And there is a 20-foot buffer on the Wood Hall side as well, but it's not, it's platted, it's not platted exclusive of the lots, as Councilwoman Robinson was just alluding to. So the effective buffer could be 40, but on this side, it's a 20, and they're providing that full 20 on this site.
Okay, gotcha. The other, there were some concerns by residents about grading of the site. Can you maybe talk a little bit about the mass grading requirements for developments, and what the town can and cannot approve?
Yeah, so our LDO doesn't allow mass grading for residential sites under eight dwelling units per acre. There could be some topography challenges that would allow us, at the time of development review, to allow some grading beyond a lot-by-lot grading, but that would be on a site where there would be severe topography, and there would be fill and retaining wells necessary. That's not something that developer can do without our review and approval. So that doesn't, the challenge that this site holds, and so that, so mass grading would likely not be happening here.
Okay, got it. And then, my last question, and this came up, I think in our original public hearing, and a couple of the speakers articulated this today, stormwater. So this is a general concern that I think we hear about developments in general. And then we also hear things about how Cary's great. You know, Mrs. Top, in her comments, said, you know, Cary's the best in Wake County. Can you maybe, just for transparency purposes, describe what kind of standards Cary has, and then maybe kind of help quantify a little bit some of the comments on how good Cary standards are?
Yeah, so this site would be held to, you know, subject to Cary's stormwater regulations, which require developers to mitigate to the 100-year storm, and that's far more stringent than the state regulations. So their stormwater devices would be designed and the location cited at time of development plan review, but they would be, they would be required to mitigate all impervious surface on the site. And those standards control or speak to peak flow management, water quality, they do take the soils into account, so there is some customization of that based on what the soil is in that particular area.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So ahead.
Questions? Comments?
I do have a clarifying question. When I met with the applicant, and I just want to clarify here, based off of also what Ms. Robinson was saying, are the perimeter buffers, in particular, part of the lots? Or are they via the homeowners association language or covenants, are they separate and part of the preserved open space?
So this applicant has offered a condition that they'll plat the lots exclusive of the buffers. So the buffers will be in homeowners association space, they will not be a part of the lot, platted lot that the property owner maintains and owns.
Okay. And I'm just, I was just clarifying, based off of what I see in the slide, the conditions, and I just did see it there, and I wanted to make sure to call that out, because I was pleased, you know, when I challenged the applicant about some of the stormwater mitigation, understanding that what often happens is people do then clear the trees that are on their property, and then that, you know, that causes significant problems. I was pleased to see that. So I just wanted to make sure I really understood that condition. Thank you.
Any other question or comments before I call on Ms. Bush?
I have a whole bunch of comments. That was my only question.
You can go, if you want.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please. Go with the questions first.
Go ahead, Ms. Bush.
At the February 9th meeting, there was a question, Ms. Wheelahan, about the potential of asking the developer to provide an indication or a letter to prospective homeowners to alert them to the fact that they are not in Wake County, but in Chatham County, because of some of the, I guess, complaints we have heard from Chatham County Cary residents, and to somewhat, you know, head that off at the pass. We had a condition like that for previous non-age-restricted developments. Was there any progress made there?
So, we did pass that feedback on to the development team, and they said they would consider that. In terms of it being a condition that we would be interested in accepting, I would defer to Lisa to speak to that.
Yeah, I think the enforcement of that would be difficult for staff, and so, for that reason, not sure we would recommend that. I do think it's information that the developers can pass along as the project is built out.
Okay.
Paul, thank you.
I wanted, I just wanted to share a few things. There was a lot of feedback from the community on this project, and, you know, initially, I'll be honest, I was not in favor of approving this project. I did a lot of homework. I read the Chatham-Cary Joint Land Use Plan in its entirety. Well done. Good job. That was nothing. Then I read the watershed protection overlay unit.
Oh my God, you know how to party.
Boy. I did. And I brought quite a few questions to staff, quite a few, and I got those answers. Just before I met with the applicant, and I just want to say that, and I understand why a lot of folks, you know, read that joint land use agreement and would like it to maybe be interpreted a little bit differently. But I do feel, especially after some of the conditions that the applicant agreed to, really, they were very open-minded. I said, "Hey, you know, I'm your stormwater police here. Let's talk about, let's talk about this," right? And I was, I was really, I wasn't unpleasant, but I really did challenge them, and I felt as though this is a good example of not only meeting our requirements, but exceeding them. And that's one of the things that I've had And that's one of the things that I've had trouble with. I understand the passion that a lot of people feel that are immediately adjacent to this plan, but we have minimums. And when somebody exceeds the minimums, I think that that sort of speaks to the character of the project. And I just wanted to express that, that even with a thorough reading of these rules and requirements and these agreements, this does, it meets the spirit and I feel the letter of those agreements, having read and learned quite a bit, and quizzing the staff. So I got to say, our staff is a wealth of knowledge. And, you know, I believe that even what I was asking about the perimeters being undevelopable, I think that came out of that meeting, and they readily agreed to that. And the engineer that met with, I believe I was with Councilmember Robinson at that point, I am satisfied, actually, that the stormwater challenges are actually a little bit better with the mitigation that they'll do on this property, that it is, you know, that there is a lot of things that will be a challenge with us developing as we get towards the lake. But I do think that this is in-spirit, low-density, and I think that they really went a little bit above and beyond with some of the things that I was challenging them to do. I went into that meeting not liking this property and having, you know, this, sorry, this project and having some serious concerns about it, and I feel like they addressed them. So I just wanted to share that. I know that some folks are going to be unhappy with me saying that, but it's just, it's what happened, and that's the honest truth.
Any other questions or comments? I'll call on Laurie one more time if not, before we move to motion.
I'll jump in then. So I do want to echo what Ms. Robinson, Ms. Johnson says. I won't, I guess, re-articulate that, but I agree with what you guys said, wholeheartedly. For me, I can really relate to these neighbors, specifically the ones in Woodhall that are adjacent to this property. In my backyard right now, I have a large undeveloped tract of land, and I've sat many a nights on my back deck and thought, man, I wonder what they're going to build here one day. And I can guarantee that many of those neighbors are thinking the same thing, wondering what's going to happen here. And I can understand the whole process and going through this is very unnerving, especially when you have a developer that's, you know, kind of changing things as they go. I definitely think the changes that we're making are in the right direction. I echo some of the concerns, but for me, I agree, it meets the spirit of the plan. But I want to take it a step further and kind of put myself in those shoes and say, you know, if I were to have to live in this area, or if I were to have to drive down Luter Shop Road looking at this development, would I be happy? And I would say yes. And the reason for that is that even though there are smaller lot sizes, the developer is doing some mitigation factors on that. Ms. Robinson mentioned the whole clustering aspect. I think that the developer is actually doing a superb job on positioning the smaller lots in a way to make it not as apparent. You know, increasing the lot sizes to 13,000 on the easternmost, I think, is great. Having larger lots around the perimeter is great. It will help provide some additional transition. And I also think that the buffers that are provided are definitely adequate to provide those transitions. But for me, probably the most critical condition that was added between when we first saw this and when we're looking at it today is that 10-foot minimum side setback. And that's something that can be very easily overlooked and misunderstood. And the reason why I think that that's important is because the developer is actually doubling the side setback between what a traditional R8 would allow. And they're, in essence, making this look like an R12, even though we're going to have smaller lot sizes. And I would argue that driving down Luter Shop Road at 45 miles per hour, looking over, I'm probably not going to notice the difference between a 10,000, 13,000, 15,000 square-foot lot, but I am going to notice the difference between a 5-foot and a 10-foot setback. And I think by increasing that setback and providing more space between the houses, this development is going to look more low-density, which is, I think, what the developer is really trying to achieve and what the Chatham Land Use Plan is really calling for. So by adding those, I think the developer is doing a good job of mitigating it, and it does make a good fit.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Anyone else? Ms. Bush, you have anything to add?
I do not. Thanks for asking.
If we're done with questions and comments, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve 22 REZ 13, Canoy tract and associated annexation 22A 13, and that we adopt the following documents attached to the online agenda: the annexation ordinance for 22A 13, the statement of consistency for 22 REZ 13, and rezoning ordinance for 22 REZ 13.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion. Just to be clear, we're doing the annexation, rezoning, and consistency statement, all in one motion. Okay.
And the votes are just those here at the table?
That's correct. A maximum of six votes. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So motion carries 5-1. Thank you, Ms. Wieland.
Thank you.
We now move to our last discussion item, fiscal year 2024 budget adoption. And I'll recognize financial analyst manager, Mike Franks. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I'm very excited to be here tonight for the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budget. This comes after two public hearings and various other methods to get public input on the budget. The total fiscal year 2024 budget is $524 million and includes a tax rate of 34 and 1/2 cents, which is consistent with last year. Solid waste fees remain at $22 per month, and utility rates are increased 3% to cover additional costs for items such as chemicals, which are required to operate the system. The budget also makes future-focused investments in areas like housing, where Cary will contribute $5.2 million for various capital and operating initiatives. It also invests in public safety with six new positions for police. There are also 15 new positions for the downtown park to ensure it can operate and be properly maintained after it opens. Funding of $8.4 million is included for several stormwater projects focusing on stormwater mitigation and related improvements. Finally, it includes several investments in the environment, including the addition of an energy manager position, which will focus on energy management and emissions reductions. Tonight, the staff recommends that council adopt the fiscal year by 2024 recommended budget with proposed changes. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. I'll start it off by saying that I meet with Wake County mayors once a month, and I can guarantee you, nobody has an easier process than we do, and it's because of the work you guys do. You guys are amazing, and you listen to us year-round. Our vision is what's in the budget, and we make sure that things happen that the citizens need, and we do it all as efficiently as possible. Yes, we have the lowest tax rate by far, and I know it's not going to stay that way forever, but we're enjoying it while we can, and we enjoy the amenities and everything that we get by having a strong budget. And add to that, we have the flexibility of adjusting it every quarter. I don't think any other municipality in Wake County or around us in the region has that flexibility, and that allows us to do much more with the tax dollars than in other communities. So I'm very grateful for the staff and the time and effort that you put in to this budget. And in case a lot of people don't know, we are ranked number six in the nation as one of the best places to live, and this is one of the reasons why, is because we handle taxpayer dollars very well. So thank you. And now I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
So I did want to say a couple of things. The first is to thank staff. So as a new council member, this budget process was interesting and very new to me, but you guys really went above and beyond and made it easy to understand and kind of went out of your way to answer the questions I had. So I did just want to mention that. Two of the things that I really like about this budget are commitments to sidewalks. There's a good amount of money that's going through Sidewalk Connections, which is something I think we definitely need, specifically in my district. And then also the commitment to look at the transit in District D. That's one of the things that I think is overdue, and some of the things that we really need within District D. So I'm glad to see that we're taking the beginning steps to expand transit there. And just to echo some of what the mayor said, I've recently read, you know, some of the other municipalities in this area, Raleigh and Chapel Hill jumping out, where they're having double-digit percent increases in their tax rate. And here we are, looking at our budget today with no tax rate increases. And I just want to commend the town on our ability, given the large inflationary pressures, I mean, we all go to the grocery store and see how much milk and eggs are these days. Given those pressures, we're still able to have a balanced budget with no tax increases. And like the mayor said, you know, I recognize that one day, we're going to have to do something with taxes. You know, that's, I think, inevitability. We're definitely going to do that. But I think that we can look back on years like this where we're not just raising taxes, or we're not just collecting money because we can. Like, we're very strategic and we're very intentional with our spending. And that makes me feel good about those times when we are going to be, you know, asking our citizens to support us in a tax increase, knowing that we're doing it intentionally, and we're not just doing it to raise money because we can. So.
Thank you. Other comments?
Go ahead.
No, the, it's always great working with the staff that's always kind of one step ahead of us, and that's really appreciated. You know, I think, I think sometimes it may look easy, but it's a lot of hard work. And when you look at the budget, a lot of that is an investment in the future. We're doing a lot where we're looking at, looking at things that we might be doing, and we're, you know, we're planning, we're getting the consultants, and we're getting that information. I think that the fact that we have the rolling budget speaks volumes, because it does give us, if for some reason, something stranger unforeseen comes up, we have the ability to do it. And frankly, looking at it, it sounds a little corny, but I think I see a lot more compassion. I see a lot more things that we have the ability to do now and we're doing, be it with the affordable housing, be it with the healthy homes, all those things. You know, it's not perfect. We'd always like to spend a lot more, but we're making, I think we do the best job, and definitely in the county, of making sure all people in Cary feel welcome and feel treated well. It doesn't matter about income. It doesn't matter if you live in some palace on top of a hill. Wherever you live, if you're in Cary, you feel welcome, and I think we back that up with the investments that we make in our budget. And I think sometimes that's just plain forgotten and has to be said. So, you know, from my perspective, well thought out broad, and even though, Mayor, you're saying in the future, the day will come where we may have to look at that differently and have those increases, for the most part, a lot of those increases come on those things like parks and rec where we get the voters' feedback. It's not always, but, you know, the other thing that's forgotten is we've kept our basic services fees pretty level again this year. So, you know, I was reading one of our neighboring cities, you know, quite a difficult night last night, and a four-to-three vote, and, you know, I'm glad that we put the issues on the table, and as a team of peers here, we work it out. We don't always agree. I've had years I've been frustrated with things, but in the end, we work hard to make sure that what we're putting forward is something that we can all get behind. So thank you to the staff. Thank you to the peers here. You know, I think this has been an extraordinary year to come up with this budget with all the things that are going on in the world today. My thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I have two clarifying. People probably have a twitch from getting emails from me that the subject line says, question about the budget. So thanks, y'all. Two quick questions. I do see that the total budget is just a little bit higher, and I wanted to confirm that that $250,000 increase for the budget for the Healthy Homes Cary grant, for the home rehab grant, that council approved during the work session, that's part of that number, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And secondarily, this, at first, this is kind of like a dumb thing. I'm like, why am I so hung up on the 96% replacement rate for utilities? Right? So my understanding is that we build about 96% of the expense of our water and sewer. Why not 100? And why not maybe 110 so that we have money to invest for additional? This is a legitimate question.
I'll have to jump in on that question.
Great, great.
We can't go over 100%.
We can't.
So we're cost recovery for things like solid waste and utilities.
Okay, so we stay a little under...
We need to stay a yes.
Okay, thank you. That's been bugging me. And I asked, and in talking about this, a couple of people said, you know, oh, you should charge 110%, and then you have money for new sewer lines and stuff. And I said...
There may be a discussion regarding stormwater one day.
Aha, okay, stormwater fee. Got it, yeah. That makes sense. Okay.
I too want to thank staff and everybody for all your work on this. You guys are amazing. You make our job as easy as it can be. So I don't want to sound like a broken record and say, everybody's saying, thank you, thank you. But you all deserve it. You busted on this one, so thank you. I agree with most all the comments made here tonight. I actually liked Mr. Eads' comments, you know, intentional with our spending. And I don't like the word spending because I see it more as investments than spending, but yeah, it's preference of words. But I think the one thing that Cary does great is we only ask for money when we need it, and we only ask for what we need. And if we don't need additional funding, we don't need additional monies, we don't ask for them. And I think that's just, it's one of the things that makes Cary Cary. I'm really excited that we've already got the funding for the operations and the downtown park stuff in there. We know that that's going to be a significant thing in our downtown that's going to require a lot of people a lot of the time, and I love how we're already planning on that. I love the investments in public safety. I really do. I think we're seeing, not just in Cary, but, you know, nationally. The world's a little bit more of an unsettling place these days, and we're trying to be proactive and get on the front end of that. And that's, again, it's what Cary does. As I mentioned earlier, I'm ecstatic that we're finally making, appropriating the funds to rehabilitate and restore the Nancy Jones house. Our investments in historic preservation are real and meaningful. I always believe you can't continue to go forward if you don't know where you've been, you know, and no matter how much Cary continues to grow or where we go, we can't forget where we came from. So thanks to all of you, everybody involved in this, Mr. Smith said, our council colleagues, and everyone. I too sent a lot of emails and questions and things, and it's like, what's that? Or a little bit, what about this? Help me understand that a little bit better. And it might seem disjointed at times, but it's a heck of a lot better than three or four meetings for three or four hours of meeting. And because I think the way we do it, we get each person's concerns, issues, questions asked without totally burdening everybody else with them at the same time. And then we do come together for those work sessions and things where we do have those joint conversations. And so it's, I do love the rolling budget process. I love the quarterly meetings. I think a lot of the work that we do annually gets done in those quarterlies, and it's that check-in that you don't have to wait, you know, a whole 12 months before you finally get to the end, then, hey, what about? You know, it allows us to pivot and react to the needs and the changes that are occurring at that moment, and it's just, it's worked so well for us. To the mayor's point, while we might have to address the tax topic at some point, I bet you a jelly doughnut, even if we do, we're still the lowest in the county.
Probably.
So anyways, again, just kudos to all of y'all. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. I agree, the quarterlies are a real game changer for us. When I first told our peer elected officials from other governments that we were moving to a quarterly system, they, you know, basically treated us with sympathy, like, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't do that. That sounds awful. And it has been really extraordinary. It takes away some of that desperation that I think our peer governments experience, where they feel like it's now or never, if I don't get this in. I also think it alleviates some of the political posturing that occurs in a budget. I think we're spared of that. One thing I really love about this budget, you mentioned, Don, and I'm sorry to repeat, and if I could repeat everything that you guys have said, I would, because everything you guys say is so intelligent. But you were talking about the fact that we put the operating budget in there. We've looked ahead at what the operating budget is for the We've looked ahead at what the operating budget is for the park, and I talked about that with Sean and a couple other staff members, Lisa, this week, about the idea of having us look at our infrastructure, our capital on a whole, and trying to determine in some way what our ongoing operating is going to be going forward. Because as we take on new park facilities, like, let's say, a community center out west, it'll be really nice to be able to understand what that cumulative operating impact is year over year. It costs a lot to have a really high-quality community, and I want us to be cognizant of that as we move forward. I will say that we have the most extraordinary staff, and you guys are unlike anything that people think about when they think about government staff members. You're extraordinary. And we can't have such a lean budget if we didn't have such hard-working individuals, and that is a reality because the people who work for our town go above and beyond, and you can see that in every single department that we have. And so for that, I want to say thank you because we sit up here and we feel really good, like, hey, we have the lowest budget in Wake County, but it's because our staff members are working so incredibly hard. And I'm trying to make eye contact with every one of you because every one of you guys out there is just absolutely amazing. And so for that, I say thank you because you make us look good, and our citizens are always raving about their interaction with our staff members, not just at budget time but throughout the year. So it really does help us a lot.
Ms. Bush, are you still there? Do you have any comments?
I am. It's only, it's only 2:30.
Oh, God.
I wanted to say that I also would agree. I've been appreciative of staff as well. I created a, quite a large Excel spreadsheet with all my questions so I could track them all, and then I was a little embarrassed to look at it afterwards about how much work I asked them to do. But I've also been quite appreciative about the way the rolling budget, now that we've done it for a while, has allowed us to be able to pivot and be nimble through an interesting process. And it's, I agree with Councilmember Robinson, it's truly one of the best innovations, I think, that's come to council, especially aligned with our fiduciary duties. I also am aligned with Councilmember Franks. I hope that our citizens see that our investments in this budget are aligned to what we need to do to run the town to be the best we can be, and that we invest in what they also care about, which is providing services for better helping our environmental programs, like the expansion of food waste in Western Cary, composting pilots, saving for watershed protection, to exactly what he said, the historic preservation, and even bathrooms for Good Hope Farm. I was surprised they weren't there. So I think everything from transit to parks to public safety, it's all covered, and I am certainly appreciative of not just staff, but the fellow council members who all weigh in with their expertise and their insights into what their districts best need, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to participate with you all from afar and still get a chance to be a part of it and hear all of your comments. So thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for staying up with us. It's about breakfast time for yous.
She knows how to party.
So any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Motion to approve this year's budget. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Franks. Thanks, all of you, again, for making this a very good budget. That concludes our agenda, so I declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Bye-bye.